All right. Thank you for coming. What are we supposed to say? Your image and something will be recorded.
Voice and image.
Your voice and image.
Yep, okay. So your voice and image may be recorded. There you go. Get the legal stuff out of the way. Truly, thank you for coming tonight for Coffee with the Selectmen. A few shout-outs to those who have made tonight possible. Obviously, Mr. Bradley, thank you for coming down on camera. Make sure to get Jane. She's moved all the way over there on the wall. Zoom in, there you go. There you go. Go away, Jane. To Lee Ann for the 1870 House for working with us to get a date. For Dave, our highway guy, for putting up the blinky sign. As well, I don't know what else to call it but the blinky sign at the Rotary. To the Lions Club for, thank you for putting the sign up in the center of town. Did I miss anybody? Mary for lugging all this stuff over wherever you went. And picked up some snacks. But mostly, thank you to you. We realize it's another opportunity for you to come out and give up some of your time, but we feel it's important. You know, we know that we need to do a better job of communication and transparency. That's why you'll see quite a few updates on Berlin Neighbors Connect as to what we're doing. Mary will cross-post it on the town website. We've put our initiatives up, items that we're working on, but mostly, we want to hear from you, what's on your mind. We realize people may not want to come to the Selectmen meeting on a Monday night. It is a lot of fun, just saying.
Especially when you come in costume.
That's right, especially when you come in costume. It can be really fun. You know, you might look at our agendas or look at our minute meetings and go, "It doesn't really pertain to me." So that's why we're coming to you. This is really going to be the first of many. After we go through our list tonight, we're gonna have to take it back, figure out how to divvy it between Lisa and I and Chris, and when we can get items done and how we can get items done. So we'll be back. Just want to let everyone know that we're not voting on anything tonight. We're not gonna approve anything. We're not gonna reject anything. We're really not gonna have a lot of deliberation. We'll ask clarifying questions. I've got a list. Mary's got her paper. She's ready to go. But we're just here to hear what's on your mind as to what we can do better to serve you and to serve the town of Berlin. So, anything you'd like to add? Ms. Chris? Ms. Lisa?
You did a great job. Thank you.
All right. Went in, oh yeah! Look at this, right out of the gate. I don't even ask if anyone wants to go first.
First, I want to thank you. Because to have this forum in a way that we don't have to come down and try to interrupt your meetings because you have your agendas, you have your forums and whatnot. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
My pleasure. So, this is just a pet peeve of mine for many, many, many years.
Who are you?
Decades. Mary McAlk, 119 Carter Street.
Oh, she's been to many town meetings. Well done.
Thank you, Mary.
My biggest fear, living in this town, is fire. We have a house, original portion was built in 1740s. It was added not in the 1860s. Let's just say it's a tinderbox. And, once upon a time, many, many moons ago, our fire department made it annually, they cleaned out our fire ponds. And I would challenge everybody in this room, think about where your fire pond is in relation to your house. What condition is it in? If God forbid, your house caught on fire, do you stand a chance of not just saving your foundation, but saving the structure? And I can tell you right now, I'm SOL. We are SOL. Dora Cummings' home burned to the ground right up the street from us in Cardville. The same fire pond that services our house services hers. It is so regrown, they couldn't even access it. They had to run hose to a private water source. That house burned to the ground. And even though there was a major fire on that road, that fire pond has yet to be cleaned. And I know the fire chief reports to you, I believe, and I've gotten off to countless town meetings and I've asked the question, and I'm always told, "There's a plan in action. We're looking into it."
Okay, you got it.
Got it, thank you.
You got it, thank you.
The fire pond was about 30 yards away from Dora Cummings' house. And instead of being able to use that, which they weren't, they had to run 500 or 600 feet of hose. Do the math.
I mean, and it doesn't have to be anything specific. It could be fun items as well that you want to do. Well, no, no, because I mean, well, no, no, but you need a balance. And I want people to know that it's items that are critical to you and the safety of the town, but it's also items that could be fun.
Thank you for dressing up the way you did at the pie eating.
Ah, I didn't want to wear it. Thank you. And I've told these lovely ladies, next year, they're finding a new victim. It won't be I. Just saying.
It's just nice to see someone talk to me.
Did you like the costume that I showed up in a couple weeks?
Yes, I did. I think the item picture really is the best.
Yeah. Oh, the one with my mouth wide open? Yeah, that was awesome. That was awesome. All right. No, an idea that I shared with Chris and Lisa, over the summer, we were at Harry's in Westborough, having dinner and going through the little paper that they have out there. And there was a reminder, "Come down for the movie on the Common." And I went, "Whoa, all right." Clinton does that, too. And I kept reading, and, you know, invitation to go play golf for a tournament to raise money for the veterans in town. Veterans in town got to play free, you know, four-person teams, best ball, who cared? It was just to raise money. Came back, shared it with Chris and Lisa, went back to the Rec Committee, said, "Hey, I know it's late in the season, can we do it?" They said, "Put it on the agenda." So, again, it's that balance of safety, it's fun, it's community outreach, so I don't want you to think that we're limiting our discussion tonight just on specific areas. It's truly whatever's on your mind, whatever you want to bring up to us.
Concerns, comments?
Mrs. Lipka?
Wow. She was my old bus driver.
Go ahead.
I love that beautiful building across the street from my house. It lights up my bedroom, it lights up my living room, it lights up my backyard. I'm trying to work it out, but I don't seem to get anything back. I see the windows by the office, you know, well, half the people don't even know it's there, and it looks so different from my house. I'm just up enough high enough that I look over the bank, and anybody coming with the cars, they don't even, you know, coming from Clinton, you don't even know it's there. But all those lights up on that bank and shine right over into my house. And I have all the office windows very nice, right on my back bedroom wall, every night.
All the shadows from it.
I don't know which building that is.
I've been up and talked to him.
It's on West Street.
I don't know where it's at, but...
Up the hill, they probably don't notice it so much except for...
Nothing on it.
My goodness.
Yeah.
If they turn a light...
Be happy to take that down for you.
I'll probably have to check into it with the Highway Superintendent, see what lights are on, see what lights could be turned off.
A lot of lights are on when you go by at night. They're all on.
I know we had some issues with that with Berlin Memorial after it was built, too.
We put in switches in the office so that they shut off if you're not in the room, you know?
Mm-hmm.
We can make sure it's cut off lighting, too.
Yep.
Not just office ones, you know, the big pole ones, too. It's not just the office. Those were the first, have been there for over a year.
I know a little bit about that from having been on that committee. The clearing of the land got a little overzealous because there was, theoretically, they were supposed to leave a lot of the brush and smaller trees, and they cleared it out to just the large trees. So there was talk of replanting some evergreens there to provide some privacy and to mitigate the light effect. And I'd like to think that can still be on the board somewhere.
What else?
About the downtown entrance. So, over the last few years, between 19 Carter and 1870, there's been a lot of nice improvements going in for private or semi-private funding. Is there anything we can do to help improve just the appearance as you come into the downtown? It's a lovely, small-town community, but we just have a mix of buildings that frankly need paint jobs, even landscaping that we do right on the side of the roadway as bushes and things, just to help make it look like the little, the nice little farm town that it is.
One of the things that I've come across is the potential for a beautification committee, but you do need volunteers for that. So if anybody would like to...
What kind of committee?
A beautification.
A beautification.
Yep, and there's ways to get funding, there's ways to, but normally, it is something that's not from within the town necessarily, but partied with the town.
And there's a lot you can do with very small funds, too, which is nice.
Jane, you gotta keep working on your garden, spruce it up and expand it a little bit. Just... We have amazing gardens. No, that's great. Thank you. What else? What else are you here to chat with us about? I got a whole list, but, you know, it's not about me, so what do you got?
Does Jane do the flowers across from the bank? Is that your garden? That is beautiful.
Thank you.
I mean, that is absolutely gorgeous.
Jane gets most of the credit. I'm the weeder when I can.
She's into real words.
All her ass words is a plant or a weed, I'll be damned.
I have an app for that.
Yeah, I've got an app for that. There you go.
Yeah, they do.
Did you hear that? He has an app. Is this a plant or a weed? I need that.
And anything that isn't where you want it to be is a weed.
That's right.
Another way to look at it.
Yep. All right. What else?
Can I submit my question?
Oh, no, you have to point to the camera and...
I think we're gonna get these two.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Bradley, where are you from?
Linden Street, 103 Linden Street.
All right. What do you got there, Lisa? What's on the list?
Community Preservation Act. When does it go into effect? I'm assuming it has to go back to the legislature and we have to get approval in some form, but I can find out the answer to that.
So, Lisa, then it's likely to affect not the taxes due, probably this October or November, well, we just have, but do you think...
It's already been out.
It might be by next. Next recap.
Right.
Next meeting day.
That's when it goes in, and I think it's done. It's all done.
So everything's approved? Okay.
Is it my understanding that whatever money gets spent out of that has to come to town meeting to be spent? So we would all have a, we would all have a say in where it's going to be spent?
Yep, certain percentages go to the different committees.
Okay.
But before they spend it, it has to be approved by town meeting.
You already answered one of the others.
I probably did. We won't actually, it says, "When does the state kick in their percent and what is the percent?" We won't actually know until we know the exact amount of money that they've put in the pool. I know that they added more money this year because it has been underfunded with the amount of communities who have actually passed Community Preservation, but there was more funding added with the overage that they had this year. We do, do we have to spend this money every year? We do not. Does it have to be divided equally between conservation, recreation, and historical preservation? It does not, but 10% goes to recreation, 10% goes to historical, and 10% goes to affordable housing, I believe is how that works. And then probably at least 10% to conservation. My guess is that the bulk will generally go to conservation, but we'll have to see how that plays out based on what comes to town meeting. What is the process or application to request this money? I would think that you would go to the, there will be a committee that's made up of recreation, historical, conservation, they'll all, you have to put a part of the way that the Community Preservation Act is legislated, you have to put together that committee that has people from each of that, so they will make recommendations. So I would say you would probably go to the committee that would be requesting the money, who would then go to that committee and request that through them. Is there a committee that decides where and when these monies are spent? Does that cover?
Yep.
Okay.
What else? Don't make me go down my list. I got it up to Jay, just saying.
Scott Hawkins on Burmide Village Lane. What's the status of the apartments at River Bridge? Is that ever being built?
They are going to start, I believe they're starting to pull permits. Not now, but shortly.
They've dropped all the plans, big, huge piles of them.
What's that?
I can't hear.
The apartments down at River Bridge.
My question, too.
They are all moving forward now. The big plans have dropped, they're starting to pull permits.
Good.
It'll be a process of about two years is what they're telling us to get them all done. They'll do them sort of one building at a time.
Is there gonna be another hotel there as well?
No.
Just the one?
Yes.
Janet?
Because I heard something about another one also.
What?
Yeah, another hotel.
Where?
It hasn't gone to planning yet, so...
Oh, yeah.
I think Janet would probably know before we did.
Do you have anything?
I was going to update the two of you that I had a meeting last week with the Town Hall Advisory Committee, and that we're gonna move forward finishing the Curatorial Building. We were concerned about the finances. It may be very close, but I think we're gonna do okay. And so, I believe the electrical permit was pulled today. And we're, June and I are keeping an eye on the finances and making sure that, you know, we're gonna make it...
Is that for here?
What's that?
Is that for here?
Yes.
Is that doing that work?
And then this project will be done.
They are.
Which is nice. What is it, in 200 years?
Possibly.
They're close.
Yep.
So, let's see, I don't know if I can think of anything else to...
Well, one of the other items that I wanted to bring up was additional town cleanups. I know that we do a great job at Earth Day, and everyone goes out and there's tons of bags all over the place. And recently, we had reached out to the Sheriff's Department in Worcester County and said, "Hey, can you help?" And sure enough, they came over and they helped, but, you know, with all the concerns that I see all over Facebook about the Fireball person, whoever that person is in town, dropping little Fireball nips all over the place, that we could do something and maybe...
We should be able to find them, because if they're drinking that many, they're staggering.
I know, that's true. We should be able to find them.
There's a couple of streets where there are particularly problems.
Bud Light.
Berlin must have stock in Bud Light.
Have you gone over to the dump lately?
Or if we don't, we should.
But now they're making Jim Beam in beer, so you can drink it all the time.
And in coffee.
There's a lot of cider these days.
So, no, I thought that maybe, and again, you know, kind of like to Lisa's point a little while ago, is that we need volunteers to do this. So if we could have an Earth Day, maybe after the snow is gone, so it uncovers all the crap that's been covered by the snow. And then in the spring, and then maybe before the snow falls. So, I know a lot of people take great pride in this town, and we're always stopping, picking up trash, so maybe it's something that we can organize a little bit more, so we have Earth Day 1, 2, and 3 each year.
One of the things that is really common where I'm from is actually people sponsor different sections of the road. They get a little sign or recognition of some sort for taking sections of the road. That may be something...
Get the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts to drop this.
Well, so I was just gonna say, the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts, they try to go out every Earth Day, and we're always looking for new opportunities. And we had talked about, because Earth Day's gotten to be very popular, do we do it off of that schedule? So if, you know, we were able to get some town bags, or we picked an area, we could always go around in the fall, the only problem is, it's just not a huge group. So you can do Lancaster Road, and that would be about it for a day.
One road is better than none.
That's why we start there. It's a busy road.
And it's a long road.
There's a lot on it, and it's near and dear to my heart.
All right. All right, I'm just going down my list. All right, then...
I have another question.
Oh, Mr. Bradley, I did not see you.
The farm in North Bow...
Stinky Farm?
That's the one. Is there any, is there any progress, anything further going on with that?
Did you smell it today?
Maybe, yes. He's got like...
Yeah, that's it.
Did you smell it?
I know.
Well, the smell, you smell it.
It was absolutely horrific.
It was a random rogue.
I mean, we had put some information out on the website. Chris had been working with the town administrator over there. There's a specific email address, and actually, one of my neighbors on Linden pinged me the other night and said, "I almost threw up. Find that email address for me." So we can put it out there again, but the EAP is collecting, though, so they want to hear from you. Where were you? What time was it? So they can gather more information, because there are, I believe that there is an injunction against the owner.
He was in the order last week.
Well, he was trying to appeal, I think.
Yes.
2:00 today, dirt road.
Bad. Oh, I'll send you the email. Yeah. But no, so there is. There is an email address out there, and we can gladly, hello! We can gladly repost that for everybody to get the message out to the folks, because I believe that the more information that they have, the better that they'll be informed. So I will repost that information for the EAP gal.
DEP.
DEP.
Oh, DE, not DE.
DEP. Anything else, Mr. Bradley?
That's all I can think of.
Okay. Yes!
Chris, what's going on with the building being on the ground there with Mr. Rhodes? I heard that possibly there was gonna be a swap, so he would do it somewhere else instead of there. How's that coming along?
We, Paul McAlk and I have been meeting with Mr. Rhodes weekly since last spring. Yeah. We have come up with one alternative, but I think it might need to be tweaked.
Is that the one for 32?
Yep. And we will continue to work with Mark. Right now, they're, well, tonight, they're meeting with the Planning Board, I believe.
What time is it?
20:07.
I think it might be 8:00 that they're meeting. You know, it's a little bit complicated. I mean, I have some plans here, if you want to look at it afterwards.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to know if it was still in the works.
Yes.
He also came into a board meeting and gave a presentation. I can't remember the exact date on that, but it would be in the minutes, so there is a presentation that he did in a board meeting on what the current thing is, if you wanted to go look at that.
And I think that there's also been a presentation at Planning Board.
That probably wasn't taped, though, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Not a video?
Yeah.
No, it was. That one was taped.
That one was taped.
That one was taped, so if you can look it up on YouTube, Berlin TV.
Oh, yeah, I was there. I was excited.
So, yes, there's ways to look at some of those presentations, so you can get an idea, you know, of what we're working on. It's not a done deal, so, and any suggestions are welcome.
What else you got?
Can I ask a question?
Of course, we're relatives. You're on, whatever you want, we got this.
It's not Thanksgiving.
I'm a vegetarian.
It is, it is. Family table. I'm in the kids' room.
I was, you know, I know I brought that thing up kind of out of the blue at town meeting about the fire station. However, I just wondered where that came from. Why would we be building bedding for people before we have a full-time fireman? It looks like we're back-ending, you know? And I know that we fully had it designed when we did the building, you know, to have the second floor and the stairwell and everything done when we got full-time firemen. And it seems like if we, to me, it seems like if you okay that ahead of time, that kind of predicts that you're gonna go full-time before you come before the town and ask, you know? And I don't, you know, it may not be a palace, but it was certainly a lot better than what they had, and we had it fully designed, and we spent the money on it, you know, to have it designed at that time. And I just don't think it's a, my personal opinion is, it's nuts. It's a way to spend more money that we don't need to.
I think there was a question where the plans were. That was the last...
No, we know where the plans are.
Oh, you got the plans?
And, he kind of gave it away there that night, because he said, "Oh, oh, well..." He said, you know, he admitted he'd seen them. He wanted it fancier than it was.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mary. The Rhodes Land Swap in the meeting was October 10th. Appreciate that. It was kind of awesome. All right.
Oh, okay, for Berlin TV, if you're going online.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just to follow up with the fire station and the quote dormitory. So the Capital Planning Committee has been looking at, you know, current, the buildings in town and doing it asset management. But for new construction, there has to be a design.
There is one.
Well, we need to see that first.
Well, it's in the town offices.
And it may be that this, the design that was done probably...
13 years ago.
13 years ago, may not meet current codes.
I think it does.
Okay. If it doesn't, in any case, usually, there's a designer involved in the project, so even though they were designed a while back...
Well, there were three of us on the committee that were sitting there that night, and I said to them, "Didn't this get, didn't we pay for having this designed?" And they said, "Yes, we did. He just doesn't like it." But, you know, I still think it's putting the cockerfoot horse.
It is, it is. Matter of fact, who's gonna use it? What, how many people are gonna use it?
The guys that don't want to go home.
Well, you know, usually, things are designed based on a program.
Right.
So an architect would ask these questions. "What do you want to do here? How big does that have to be? To meet this current handicap code, are they wide enough?" All of these questions have to be asked even before the design is made, and they probably were made at the time. So using that current design or the design that we have, might be a modification of that, but we need to see that.
But for $25,000.
Before the town can vote. That has to be before the town meeting. It can't be at the town meeting. All of that information should have been available to citizens before the...
You know, I remember when we designed it, we left a specific place for the stairwells to go upstairs. You know, we took all that into consideration, and I just was kind of bothered about hearing that come up in that manner.
It was last minute, it was not well-presented. Everyone can agree to that. It didn't pass, okay? And if it comes to the annual town meeting in the spring, ahead of time, there has to be some hearings, there has to be some public, this is what we're planning to do.
And why are you doing it?
And why are we doing it?
And if you go back and look at the tape of when that was brought up originally, we asked for all of those things. They just didn't come to fruition, but we did ask for those things and do agree that all of those things need to come forward, so that at town meeting, at town meeting, people can make an appropriate decision based on all the information.
Right.
So, nobody's in disagreement that all of that, those things need to happen. It's just sometimes they don't.
I have a question. The town warrant comes out the week before town meeting. I am sure you have the town warrant questions well before the town warrant is printed and comes out, but you get your mailing one week before, and to me, if you're, you know, I've been to a lot of meetings, so I know what the questions are ahead of time, or am trying to follow them, but for some people, they get that warrant and they go, "Oh, I didn't know that." And they have a week to try to gather up some intelligent questions to ask, and sometimes you can't get all the information if the meeting minutes aren't posted, if the committee isn't meeting before the time you actually get the mailing and town meeting comes, there's no, there's no committee meeting in between. And I just wondered if there was any way you could possibly get those warrant questions out in raw form, just to give people a heads up, um, rather than a week before you get it in the mail. I don't know if that's what the legal, the legal issue is there. I, I'm just curious.
It's not a legal issue. It's just typically they aren't ready to go until they're, they're headed to the printer. And I think all of us would love for that process to be quicker and smoother, but they're, seriously, they're not.
But why? I mean, if you want a warrant, your warrant has to be into you before when? Like, what is the cutoff? I'm just curious.
We're going to have to back those dates up.
It's not as simple.
Because it's, it's like a rush job at the last minute.
There are many, many different.
I'm, I'm sure there are. That's why I was going to be critical. I was just asking the question.
We try. We try.
We watch the selectmen's meeting and see people give a deadline and then we.
And then we race around trying to go through.
And then, no, and then we listen to the same ones go, oh, they, they missed that deadline or that committee missed the deadline. And that's, that's not right either.
We're going to be very strict this year.
But what is the deadline for warrants?
Um, it's actually mandated in the town bylaws and they go out typically on the day that, that they're mandated on.
No, 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 no. What is the deadline to get a warrant to be considered for the town?
Is it, is it?
I don't really, I just.
A week, Mary? Two weeks?
No, no.
No, months. The deadline to get.
To be in the hand. See, I want to put a warrant on it. Excuse me, an article, sorry, an article on. What is the deadline for that article to be in, to get approved, to be put on into the book?
In a perfect world, we would have it, the annual town meeting now you're talking about.
Correct.
A month ahead of time. The month before you're seeing it at your house because it needs to go through town council review. And finance committee needs an opportunity to weigh in, to give its recommendation so that it goes into the printed warrant. That's not happening anymore. So because there's a crush in, uh, but the problem is there's often a lot of placeholders submitted by committees that don't have their final language ready. So the fact that the selectmen open a warrant on a certain date and they warn everybody a month later, we need your final language. And it's been a course of habit that the, the final warrant articles do not come in. In fact, they're coming in well past the date that you need town council review.
I mean, at some point the selectmen just need to be asked about it and say, your warrant's not going to be on the article anymore. It's been pulled and kicked.
Well, it's right.
People started finding that their deadlines get, their projects get crushed because they've missed deadlines. So sad of them. It'll make them do it more next time.
My predecessor said that she used to, of her own volition, I guess, but then as a resident of the town, say that it wasn't going on the warrant.
Yep.
But I, I don't think I have that authority.
The other thing is that, that I think some of the delay also has to do is that we've combined department reports with the warrant articles. And I think if the book, instead of being eighty pages long and it'd be printed and take longer to print and bind and mail, are just the warrant articles and the budget, that could go up super, and then you could send that to everyone in town and then just have the town reports available like at the library and town hall and town meeting, uh, for those people who want it and save some of the money. Because as the town grows and the book grows, the cost for that goes up where ninety percent of the people probably just toss it and never look at it.
And Dave has actually provided us with a warrant article for hopefully spring.
You have to change the town bylaw, but Dave Westling has suggested.
So we could talk a little bit about the budget kickoff, which is going to be Thursday night. So we developed a, a calendar for the budget process, which includes the, the ending of that is town meeting. And so what we did is, uh, we thought about early on about, uh, so the current method is, is to include the spring annual town meeting warrant in last year's report. And the, so this year it would be the, the two thousand seventeen annual report. And those reports are due from the department heads and committees, January twentieth. So on January twentieth, everyone hands in these reports, but they're not printed until a week before town meeting. Uh, because the warrant is included in that, in that following year's report, if you want to think of it that way. So what we did early on in the budget guide is we split them and we proposed a guide, it was revision one, I guess, where they would be separate. And, and then we, Mary mentioned, we've, we found out that you needed to change Article Two in the town bylaws. So I drafted a, a proposed or a possible Article Two to consider at this year's town meeting. And basically it's what everyone's been suggesting, separating the warrant from the last year's town report. So that last year's town report could be printed. It could be mailed, uh, right now it's mailed to all households. Because the warrant is in it for, for more than reasons than not, it could be provided to households, uh, in a digital format by posting it on the website. Some people would prefer having a digital copy then, because you can search the digital copy. To search the, the printed copy, you have to flip through every page. So a lot of people now would prefer not to get it, have it mailed. Some would not. Some would, some would like to have it mailed.
What are we going to fight over?
What, what, yeah, what are we going to fight over?
Everyone's going to pull up their tablet.
And also make the print bigger on the tablet. Some of the print is very tiny.
You can enlarge it. You can do it.
It was better this year. Corey actually made the font size bigger this year. That's just.
So that, that proposal's, we're thinking is going to be at this, next year's annual town, next spring's town, annual town meeting. It'll be a ch, a change and then the warrant would be printed, would, the warrant has to be mailed under state law to all households in town. So that would still be done and it would have the recommendations of the finance committee. And it might even have some positive and negative, uh, on some of the issues where there's citizens, citizens want to say something about it. A little bit like we do with, with, the state does, with their, uh, voting questions. So that's on the proposal. I mean, it, we, it came up because we're doing this calendar and we said, well, why is it, well, the warrant, it just has to be done sooner. And so that's your, really your question.
Yeah.
If you could get that, let's say, two weeks before town meeting and you already had had, uh, access to last year's annual town report, you could then compare some historical budgets, some, how the committee was done last year. But everything arrives one week before town meeting and it's, it's this thick. And, and there's, the last year's, uh, town meeting results are in there, which would be nice to have earlier, which was available earlier to, you know? So all of that would be done ahead of time and then it would be just more logical to do it that way. But, but we'll see. It has to come before town. The change of the bylaw has to come before town meeting.
And also send the tax bills before the town meeting.
And. The special town meeting.
People spending money, but you're talking sailors. It's crazy.
Yes. And it should, in the spring, it shouldn't be a problem. The tax bill should be before the town meeting in May. And then for special town meeting in the fall, it would be nice to get the tax bills ahead of that special town meeting. Special town meeting has no set date, but in this case it was set, you know, early November. And, uh, people probably should have got the tax bills around October fifteenth.
It's every year like that, so.
Is that right?
Make, make, make change.
That's up to, uh, other, other boards set that date. So you, you heard the man.
Okay. Following on that, I did hear from, uh, a person and, um, they had an idea that they wanted to throw out that I promised I would, was a challenge to reduce budgets across the board between two to five percent. So again, I don't know how to do that. Um, but I informed the person that I would bring it up. That that would be an item that we could take under advisement, that we could talk to other folks about, because we hear it loud and clear. That the money being spent is outrageous, tax bills outrageous. We have such a small town. What are you going to do to control spending? Thus the question. So.
And I would dispute almost all of those facts. Our tax rates have gone down five of the last six years. You know, because we got, because we've added some of the commercial development to the edges of town, the amount we pay towards it is, continues to go down. But we have kept, uh, a lot of costs down. We've looked at longer term solutions where we spent a little bit more money on capital stuff, so our ongoing operating is down. And our tax rates are lower than a lot of the towns around us. We also at some point need to dissuade the fact that we are a small rural town. We get a third of our tax rate from large commercial developments. And so if we don't do things to keep supporting the large commercial developments, if they disappear tomorrow, our tax rates will go up fifty percent because none of those commercial properties are putting any kids at our schools and our schools are our number one expense. And so, you know, those places keep our tax rates low and keep our place. And yes, they cost us in fire and yes, they cost us in police. But the amount of money they put into our town in taxes, way, way, ways more than, than the amount they're costing us in fire and police.
So related to that though, uh, it seems like we continue to pull out of the Highland Commons funds. Um, if, I can't imagine we have that much left to pull from.
It's actually, we get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year now at this point.
It was five.
It's an annual fund.
Wasn't there a one time?
There was a budget one time and that stuff was spent a couple of years ago.
All that's left is the public safety.
Right, which comes in every year. Yep.
But that was the largest.
That was by far the largest amount, yeah.
I remember at one point, I think it was a couple of years back, there had been talk about, uh, trying to refill some of those funds. So that way we, we can use it as a bit of a slush fund in the long term. I don't know if any town committee's actually doing that or working on that.
You know, FinCom for the last several years, and I got to speak a little out of court because I'm not on FinCom anymore.
Yeah, but you just left.
Uh, that, uh, we, we tried and we worked a little bit and actually we're starting to work more in Dave's. Uh, Capital is trying to figure out the way to, what is the right balance of using that money for actually paying for salaries for police and fire departments versus actually paying for the equipment. So far, actually, in my, in the several years of money's been, it has paid for like all the new police cars, most of the new fire trucks, uh, and, and actually has paid for at least a full-time officer at this point. So it's really helped keep our tax rates, again, continue to keep our tax rates low. And this is on top of what those, those commercial properties are giving us in just pure property taxes. But there is, yeah, there's an attempt to start to do a long-term, a longer term plan and at least some better agreements on, you know, if the fire department thinks they're spending it all on capital stuff and the selectmen think we're spending it all on operations, that's everyone spending it twice, at least trying to get a better, like, what's the right balance on that. And Dave's committee did, I think, a good stat, uh, stat at it last year and, and the first draft was in pretty good shape. And I think it'll take a couple more years before we have that really down to something that's, I think, really stunning. So, yeah, the first year was hard because we didn't have a lot of, it was the first year. But now, this year, we're going to hand out what we did last year. So we'll have one year of data, if we want to call it that. And, and the departments will have one year of experience with us. So we, it was fairly smooth last year. We're trying, going to try to smooth that out with the department heads and have a five-year plan. So no one comes to town meeting saying, this is what we made. Well, it wasn't in the plan. You should have thought about that last year or the year before. And what we did last year is we shifted things because we didn't have enough money to fund everything, of course. But we shifted into different years and some people said, oh, yeah, well, you know, they're still under warranty. We have two more years. So we put that in twenty twenty-three. Okay, so spreading it out and it should be even. It shouldn't go up and down. And, and that way people will have a better feeling for what they have to spend. It would be like your own household. You know, you have a budget and, and you, if you have some big items, you've got a plan for them. You can't just show up and, and demand this. So we're, we're moving in that direction. We're in our second year and I, I think we're on the right track. But it, it takes a lot of, a lot of, I don't know, buying into the process by the department heads and the people who are asking for this money. Is this what you need or is that what you want? If it's what you want, but if you need it, you have to justify it. So that's sort of the oversight.
I would also say that, that I feel pretty strongly that having a town administrator in town that's sort of running the ship at, at the higher level should help with some of these issues. Um, just having somebody be sort of a chief financial officer and having somebody who's even driving the warrant process a little bit more. A lot of these things should be addressed by having somebody in that office who's sort of job is to keep track and move things forward from that level.
What else you got?
Well, you mentioned budget and people staying within the budget. I mean, we as, um, townspeople, are there a lot of departments that are overshooting their budgets and every month are coming and saying, we need five thousand, we need six thousand. Because if you're in a budget in your own household, you have to stay within that budget. And how do you get these people to stay within their budget? Because we're not budgeted for that money. So where are you pulling it from? You're robbing Peter to pay Paul. I mean, if it's a consistent over budget, how are you fixing that? I mean, she asked the question. I'm just following up.
You don't love June.
I'm sorry. I do know June and I know she works very hard, but I, I mean, if you have a budget and you have four committees or four departments coming in on a regular basis saying, we're over budget, where's the money coming from?
The majority of the departments are pretty good.
Right, we're going to try by law, they can't go logic about passage or something like.
Legally, they're not allowed to spend more than what they're given. I can't write a check for more than what's there. They're not supposed to legally commit to anything that's not in their budget.
If we run out of money to save for salaries for the transfer station, she'll make me close it down for the last couple of days of the year. I mean, that's it. There is no. She doesn't give a.
This sort of perception that there's rent and overspending that it's.
There is, there's a couple of issues that we have come up with. If they run out of money, and normally there has to be a reason for them to do it. And then we ask for the, there is an amount of money, if you look on your, um, in your budget, um, there's something called the reserve fund, which we set aside every year for things like that. So, um, if a depart emergency or an unproceeding expense. If there's a, an issue with that, then the department head has to fill out a form. They have to put down the reasoning behind it. It goes to the selectmen for their approval and then it goes to the finance committee and they decide whether or not they can have that money. So it's not that they're just allowed to spend money. Um, monthly they are supposed to check their balances with what I have to make sure that they're within their budget. Um, sometimes if there's a big problem, you'll see it at town meeting floor, um, that people will be asking for more money. Um, the only other.
Or management or.
Um, well, no, sometimes things happen, you know, like the snow and salt account.
Right.
That one there is one that they're legally able to overspend after selectmen have been notified and the finance committee has been notified. But that's something more for public safety. They can't go crazy. They can't spend a ton of money on stuff, but they have to be within reason. But it's one that they can spend. Unfortunately, it is over the budget and it does have to be either found through either, normally we try not to, but you can do it through the reserve fund or something called free cash. And we try not to carry it over to have it go on the tax rate because you legally can make people pay for it the following year on the tax. But we try not to do that, so it's not an additional surprise.
We've not done that in.
We have not done that in years.
You also have the ability the last two weeks of the year, I believe, fiscal year, to do line item transfers. So if this one overestimated a budget and this one underestimated, you can move the money from one line to the other, but.
But again, it has to go through the selectmen. There has to be a reason behind it. It's not just for fun or, you know, I want to get new curtains or something like that. It actually, well, no, we've, we've had that, so. You know, so there is a limit. I mean, there are things that are true.
The biggest uses over the last several years have really been things that you can't control. So the fire department's an on-call fire department. And so if there's a lot more calls than normal or that were planned for, they overspend a little bit.
But it's usually for wages.
But usually it's for wages.
Or for the ambulance.
We've had times where, uh, like the unemployment compensation funds, that's where a self-funded sort of place, that when they did the budgets, the schools didn't tell us they were going to lay off a couple of people. And so suddenly unemployment and, and someone stays unemployed for longer than we expected time. Uh, and so there are usually things that we would not, uh, would not have foreseen, are not necessarily a result of bad management.
Building maintenance. Our buildings are old.
Building maintenance, yes, that's right.
A boiler went at one time.
Boiler and a roof at the same time, where the fire extinguisher going, yes.
Or the pump in the back for the water last year. I mean.
The, the pump at the library.
Old things break.
I mean, I can tell you a couple of months ago, we had a town officers meeting and June got up and did a great job on the budget. And it was pretty much, you know, when you go to pick up your dry cleaning, you don't have a ticket, you don't get a shirt. Well, when you go to an expense with June, if you don't have the information for it, guess what? You don't get a check. So, uh, you know, no tiki, no shirty, no receipty, no checky. So, uh, no, the message was heard loud and clear by all of the town officers that were there to know that you've got to stay in your budget. And we made the message clear. This is not your money. It's the town's money and you got to take care of it. If I run out of money, I can't run down to Janet and be like, hey, you want to pay my oil bill? I mean, she would. But, uh, I know you would. But I'm just saying, so no, there's, we know that that has always been, um, a constant thumb of, what are you going to do to control expenses? What are you going to do to control expenses? So.
I think that's the, the word we're going to have to get out on Thursday night at the budget kickoff.
Correct.
Is that you need to try to do the best you can to estimate what it's going to cost for your park. for your department this year. We understand that budgets are moving targets, but do your best. I mean, and most departments do.
I was gonna say, the finance committee's usually better than I am at that part of it. When an emergency comes up, they usually have to wait till the end, try to cut your budget and.
Right, and so what sometimes we've done at FinCom is, you know, we don't know how much things are gonna break, and we don't know how much our legal costs are gonna be and what lawsuits or what legal stuff we're gonna have to do. And so people estimate in their budgets, the high end of that, and what FinCom goes is, look, everything's not gonna go wrong in all four of these areas, and so we'll cut all of them down a little bit, and then put this reserve fund, we'll cover whichever one of them happens to go over, over what might be expected. And so hopefully, in one year, you don't end up with large legal costs and large maintenance costs and some large unemployment costs. And so, and so using the reserve fund is expected, and departments get upset at FinCom who then cut their budget going into town meeting, and then they have to come back to us because they said, "Look, we said it was gonna be $100,000, it's gonna be now." And we say, "Well, I don't know," because FinCom has not always been the nicest departments when they come in and ask for extra money.
There are a lot of checks and balances in place.
Is there anywhere in the report, I mean, I don't know, maybe Dave can answer this, that you can see, okay, we had, I'm just gonna throw a number, $10,000 in reserve and $5,000.
Actually, in their report, they actually have it listed and tell you exactly.
In each department's report?
Yep, well, both, actually, in both. If you look in each line item, you can see where there's been transfers into the account, but the finance committee also has a sheet where everything that they've spent out of the reserve is listed individually.
And it'll say, you know, recreation this much, library this much.
Yep.
I'll make another plug for digitizing the report, because we're trying to save pages, so graphics are kind of left out, but you're looking for a pie chart or something, or a bar graph. We would like to do more of those, because they're easy to read, and you can understand things very quick. If you have a long table with all, the numbers are there, but it's not, it's a little hard to communicate. So some graphs, we're starting to do some in our capital planning budget, we had two bar graphs, but we'd like to do some more of that to make it easier to read for the citizens to grasp what's happening here. So that's another plug for moving away from a printed copy for everyone, having some printed copies for sure, but having it in digital form where you can actually search for what you're looking for, and it'll zoom in on the information that you need. So that's another reason for that.
What else?
It's been fun, but I'm going to land the meeting.
All right. Well, we're gonna have another one, so make sure you come back. We're gonna have another one, because we're gonna update you. All right. Bye, cousin. Yeah, there you go. One of the other items that I saw, that I wanted to bring up, is I was going into the town offices this weekend, I noticed a lady who was struggling to get into the front door because she had a walker, and so she was trying to keep her balance and trying to open the very heavy door. And I realized there's no button to go boom and open the door. So, you know, I realized that with all the ADA compliances, that that's one that I saw, and truly, it was just timing. If I hadn't been there, it probably wouldn't, I wouldn't have seen it. So, but was happy to help her in the building, but that's one that I want to get in front of.
Yeah, this week, let's see, Monday, there was, I believe, a veteran, he was on, guy was on crutches, he had one leg, and he was trying to open the door to get in or out, and I just happened, I bumped into him both ways. I held the door as he went in, and then I was able to hold it when he came out, because they were, he, you know, at least the walker, you have.
Some balance.
Some. He was trying to open the door on crutches and push it open.
That's a public building, doesn't have to be an ADA compliant. The inspector said that that front door is easy to open from wheelchair height, and so since it's easy to pull open, according to him, that it does not need to have the button. But I see people struggling all the time.
Put it on a list, it'll be something we can look into.
I'll bring my daughter down, and she can test it.
Well, just because the state doesn't mandate it, doesn't mean it's something that we can't look at.
Right.
But odds are, if Joe's saying that it actually meets specifications, it probably does, but.
It very well could, but if it's more difficult.
There's still a problem we need to solve, so.
The food pantry is bringing things in on wheels all the time, they need, it would be easier for them, wheelchairs, medical equipment comes in and out of the building, deliveries of paper and things from, we have deliveries all the time, and they have a hard time getting in, water delivery to the building.
Well, the majority of our food pantry in Glendale, town, are all doing it.
Yes, definitely.
And they struggle with those doors.
Related to access on the doors, is there any way to work with the dispatch center to make it easier to get in and out? So for a long time there, if you had a weekend meeting after hours, they would buzz it remotely and you could pull in there. Now, about half the time when you call in, they're calling someone who's on duty to come in, and it might take them 15, 20 minutes to drive in away from a patrol they're doing or a traffic stop. It's ridiculous.
Is it that the door isn't working, or?
No.
Two or something. Wait, but very often buzzes it open.
There's a couple of different people in dispatch, and we've tried talking to them, and one of the people indicated that they were informed by someone in the town that they needed to have police, EMT, or fire to open the door instead of a buzz.
That is the policy. There's a lot of buzzer that the Neshoba Valley Dispatch District has.
Oh, okay. Otherwise.
When did that change? They used to just hit a remote button, and it would open the door.
If dispatcher was in the building, could.
No, no, in the last couple of years, I've been, we've been doing meetings for years, they have two people open it remotely.
Devon's opened it for me one day.
Really?
That was standard practice for a very long time, it just changed recently.
Okay, definitely. The police chief has said that he wants a patrolman to come in to vet who it is, because it should be the chairman of the committees. Only chairman of committees have a paw to enter the building after hours, so otherwise, the dispatchers wouldn't know who they are, so patrolman in theory knows who you are and to give you access to the building. It should be buzzing people in the building.
So the patrolman did no idea about changing the policy either.
Very well could be.
All right, I got that one.
And it might be worth taking rest of policy, so.
Yes.
There are, we can.
Okay. What else? What else is on your mind that we can pull out and write down and take care of? No pressure.
Well, if you weren't cutting the budget, maybe you could sit at comfortable chairs for the town meeting.
Barcalotges for all?
I don't care, it's chair cushions. I bring my own. I mean, those chairs are for chair. Especially if you have a three or four-hour meeting.
I'm going to put it down as a cushion fundraiser event. There you go.
How about dealing with dead trees on the highway?
That's the way to the school, that's the one. Kids are usually.
What kind of dead trees?
Yeah, oak trees, especially on Crosby Road, a lot of dead oak trees, branches are falling down on the road itself. If I hit somebody, we're gonna have serious accidents up there.
I had one come down on Crosby right across from Kevin Pahn's house, and, you know, I saw Kevin out there hoisting it back up over the wall so that you could get through, but it's, I mean, I'm right up the road from you, so I see it all the time. It's sort of slow to get down Crosby at times with branches in the road, and sometimes I stop and pull them out of the way if I can.
Might be hysteria of four inch dead oak trees all the way across the road.
You can report those to the highway superintendent, who's also the tree warden, and he puts together a list of all trees in the public way, and then he publishes that notice, and then he has a hearing for anybody who's concerned about a tree coming down, and then he can take them down. So trees that are in the public way that are gonna fall on the road, let the highway superintendent know about them so we can mark them.
I went to the open house, and I talked to, I forgot his name. He said that they don't have equipment in renting a tree elevator, what do they call that? It's $5,000 a day, yeah. Cherry picker, $5,000 a day.
So when they come to town meeting and ask for a bucket truck, please remember this.
Yeah.
They used to do it without a bucket truck, and then with super.
Yeah, I've heard something about lifting a crazy little bucket with a pull and a, something that the liability of that just makes my head explode, but.
Well, that's not how they used to do it.
Well, of course, they're gonna lift a tree down and then.
Because, yeah, they take the whole tree.
Yeah. Somewhat of them are really big.
All right, we can get back to Dave on that. What else?
Go through my list.
Chris, Lisa, anything?
We have some.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I was looking down.
I've been reading online that the FCC is considering making changes so that cable companies will not provide local television anymore.
Cable, yeah.
And by local, I mean Berlin, you know, the Berlin channels.
There's an article in yesterday's paper that FCC is making a change, where they used to require cable companies to cover local access, that they will no longer have to.
And one of the arguments was that people were taking the money. Evidently, the town gets money, or something, is there?
That goes to cable. The money that we get goes to cable. We do that every year.
But that would go away.
Well, they claim that some towns are using the money to, for other purposes.
I think that's the pay. I don't know how they changed the law recently about the pay grant, and made it so that we had to track it a little bit differently, so.
So what would happen if that went through? Would we be without the local channels?
You're two years into a 10-year contract right now, and it's not an exclusive contract with Charter, but no other company's waiting on the door to come in, and certainly not files. So the problem is that it is Charter for the next eight years, but they have a contractual obligation to continue making those payments, at least for the next eight years. Maybe the future, the eight-year mark is a different platform entirely than the cable system.
And if it does change, that's where it's the opportunity to do a letter campaign to the CEO and the board of directors, as a community service that would be ill-advised to stop.
Has a cable person heard anything about this?
This one hasn't.
I had also thought, as I was in the town offices this weekend, again, something fun to do would be a competition between the departments for food drops. We all know that we're going into the holiday season. I had some flyers from our council on aging about gifts for the seniors, and thought it was something that we could do, that we could pit department against department or figure out how to bring in food to benefit the food pantry. And I'm sure we can find money in the budget, maybe reserve transfer, for like a little trophy. Come on! A little trophy, a little ribbon, but again, something to give back, something to pull the communities, to pull the departments in town to work together, to try and have a little bragging right for, hey, you know, we outdid you, you know, because it is coming into the season of giving, so it's.
What does your flyer say?
There is a flyer. Actually, it was Holly who printed it out, our new council on aging director, and it just said, "Gifts for seniors. All of us will soon be wrapped up in the holiday spirit at Berlin. Council on Aging, we want to make sure our seniors are not forgotten. Starting December 10th, Berlin COA will be making visits to seniors' homes for the holiday. We are seeking suggested donations, such as holiday cards, non-skid socks, flashlight, sugar-free candy, diet, regular ginger ale, adult coloring books, pencils, soft granola bars, cookies, crackers, large print crossword, bird search books, lotion shampoo, coin purse, stuffed animal, toothbrush, this is a lot, toothpaste, throw blanket, mittens, combs, brushes, shower caps, all which can be dropped off." So I brought some, and they're up by the coffee, so if you wanna take it, again, it's a good way to take care of our seniors in town and give back. So if anyone's interested, I'll leave it there, and I'm sure that Holly would more than welcome any donations that we could do to help out.
And for those on Facebook, there is a Council on Aging Facebook page now that has this sort of information.
For Council on Aging, what would you drop off donations?
Glad that you asked. The pamphlet reads, "Donations can be dropped off to room 118 at 23 Linden Street, no later than December 5th."
For this project.
For this project, for this project. And I'm sure that they would take donations any time of the year, but specifically for this one, for gifts for the seniors, so downstairs. And if they're not open, Mary, I'm gonna volunteer, I mean, she's around during the week, so if our offices are open, I'm sure that we'd be happy to take it and then give it to Holly when she's there.
I'd just like to mention, anybody that would like to support the food pantry, we're having our annual fundraiser this Friday, the wine tasting, right here in this building. It's a good time for all, and I encourage you all at least to think about showing up.
How's that for public announcements? We just swoop them right in the door. Just saying. You know, when you have a captive audience, you just gotta get the skinny out there. What else?
Going along with the seniors, back a couple of years ago, we had a really, really bad winter, you know, the snow was piled this deep on the roofs and stuff, you know, there was no way that people who couldn't do it themselves, you know, there was, there were no volunteers or anything that would come and help, and some of the people couldn't afford to hire somebody. Is there something that could be done about that? I know the Town of Bolton had a whole bunch of volunteers who would go around. Is there anything like that that could be done?
Wasn't that in Holly's mail today, too? I think she was going to look, to try and reach out to the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts to see if they could get some volunteers to do shuttling. You know, I don't know about the roof fricking, you'd probably need a larger adult to do that, but she's already trying to prethink for that as well.
Okay.
Anything else? Snow shoveling and roof fricking. Nothing else?
Jane has a question.
Who is our Girl Scout leader?
Do we, I mean.
The contact I have is Sarah Keener. Sarah Keener.
I think they combined the Girl Scouts of Berlin and Hudson together, and the leader lives in Hudson.
Lives in Hudson, oh, okay.
The Girl Scout attendance has varied enough over the years that they've had to combine with different towns just to keep a local group together. Cub Scouts are much better, but we just enough to keep one in town.
Well, any other concerns or questions or? And please know that, as I said earlier, this is not a one-and-done. I plan on dragging Chris and Lisa with me to as many of these as I can possibly drag them to. Again, we wanna get the information out there, and I've got a boatload of notes. Mary, I saw taking notes behind me to keep me honest. We'll get them typed up, we'll figure out what to do with them, and then we gotta get back to you on what we can do, whether it's we can do it now, whether it may take a little bit longer to get into, but, you know, you know where we are on Monday? We all go to the dump on Saturday, so I'm sure, well, Lisa sends her husband.
That's right.
There's a reason that Lisa sends her husband, but no, I mean, we're around, so this isn't just a one-and-done, we're gonna ask you once, and then we're gonna go away and sit back up in the comfy chairs on Monday nights.
There's, our email addresses are on our website. We're in the book. Any one of us, you know, give us a call.
We're easy to find.
We'll bring it to a meeting.
Yep. I'm p-stone@townofberlin.
Ckeef@townofberlin.com.
And L, I'm gonna butcher your last name.
Wysocki.
Thank you.
Just the way it sounds.
Wysocki, L. Wysocki at Town of Berlin. And again, Mary's upstairs, so you can.
Or selectmen@townofberlin.com.
See, you can get to us, but we do, we wanna hear, hear from you. You know, this is our job, and we wanna make sure that we're taking care of the people that put us here. So please reach out, continue to reach out. It doesn't matter big or small, do you?
Sorry, I just remembered something.
Oh, yeah, sure. After my speech, nice, Mr. Bradley. Where do you live again? Linden, do you need a ride home?
I go to the store quite often, and it's very difficult to cross the street without...
Running?
Without running, or, you know, almost getting hit. In other towns, I see they have like a flashing yellow light when someone is about to approach the crosswalk, just wondering if we could have, you know, something...
We can ask the police chief, but that's 62, which is a state road, which is not our road, so there could be a hitch with that. I know that's why there aren't better lights there, because Berlin actually can't do anything about that, it's a state road.
I'll bet, he says, every Friday, I bring my granddaughter to the store, we finish toast, and sometimes we wait through 15 or 20 cars before people say, "Oh, there's someone in the crosswalk."
There is.
It drives us so distracted, you don't want to...
And it's not, it's not well...
There you go, we're going to leave a disposable pair of orange gloves for you, that's right on either side. Well, you know, there used to be that orange barrel that was in the center of, and Bob would pull it over to the, you know, over the fence or the little cement thing in the morning and at night, and he would, what happened to that?
I think it got run over.
It should have been on the crosswalk.
Better dad get run over than somebody.
Said we could have fun tonight.
Nice, Jane, it got ran over. There you go, all right. No, we will, we'll take all these back and type them up, and then we'll be back. More than likely, you'll see me again on Berlin Neighbors Connect, you know, thanking everybody, you know, tell your friends again, thank you, Mr. Bradley, for, you know, getting the word out a little bit more than just for here, but we're here for you, so we appreciate it.
I do also want to note, though, Berlin Neighbors Connect is not the official place for town news.
Correct.
On Facebook, you really want to like the town page, because some of the stuff gets over there, some of it doesn't, and it's not the way you need to get to the town.
And I can tell you that we do cross-post in both, because we know that there's a different set of folks who go on Berlin Neighbors Connect and who go to the Town of Berlin, so to hit them all.
Yeah, but if you really want to know, go to the town.
People will complain on Berlin Neighbors Connect, and it's not the right place.
It's not the venue to do it.
Yes.
Does everyone know about My Town Government?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone knows about My Town Government? Because if, some people don't, and that's where you get all your news about committees and how the town is functioning, so go to MyTownGovernment, one word.
Dot org, right?
I Google MyTownGovernment, and then I put a space, Berlin, and it takes me right to the page, and you can see all the committees, you can see calendars of committees, you can see minutes, agendas, but if you don't do that, you're on a Facebook page or something, it's like Kakaland. If you really want to get the information, MyTownGovernment...
Dot org. Dot org, yeah. I was going to say, there's absolutely a link on that.
It's a different way.
Your page, right, I guess, front of the town.
Yeah.
Well, if there is nothing else, please enjoy the coffee, the snacks, stay around for chit-chat. Mr. Bradley, again, thank you, appreciate it. Oh, you have one more? Nothing? All right.
And thank you.